One nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner, absent, Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That is eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. This evening, we have two proclamations. I'm going to start with Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a proclamation in honor of clerks, whereas the office of municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas municipal clerks provide the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies and agencies of government at multiple levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to ever be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerks through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize municipal clerks and their dedication to the communities they serve. Now therefore, in place of the Mayor of the City of Laramie speaking for Andy Somerville, we do recognize the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk and to all municipal clerks for their vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I just want to say it's a pleasure working with all of you, and you all do make my job fun and interesting, so thank you.
Two good words.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Angel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edgy.
Thank you.
And next we have Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. My proclamation is for National Small Business Week, whereas America's progress has been driven by the pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And as whereas the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do, and whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas because this country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing the ways to support entrepreneurs. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas Laramie, Wyoming supports and joins the national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Therefore, I, Brian Schuster, City Council of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2018, as National Small Business Week.
Thank you. Please come forward and introduce yourself as well.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Gorski. I'm the Executive Director for the Wyoming Women's Business, so thank you, Councilmember Schuster, for reading that. And we are going to be also celebrating this at our open house and grand opening of our gallery this week. I think everybody got an invitation for the new Art Connect Gallery, and so I do invite you to be there, and I'm hoping Mayor Somerville can still be there to make this notice there. We're receiving two awards that evening from the U.S. Small Business Administration. We were receiving a state and a regional award as business advocates, as a women's business center. And so if you didn't get invitation, I did bring extras. The other thing is Dan Norberg, he's the Region Eight out of the Denver Office, U.S. Small Business Administrator. He will also be there that evening to present our award, as well as Amy Lee, the Regional Director in Wyoming, and Deb Ferris, the Deputy Director. So I hope to see some of you there. That'd be, I think it's going to be a fun evening. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, just hold on.
Okay, City Manager, do we have any announcements this evening?
Mayor, we have two. First, I wanted to mention for the public, our city offices will be closed on Friday. It is a municipal holiday, as declared by the City Council, to recognize Laramie's 150th birthday. Our second announcement dovetails onto that, and Todd Feizer's here. He's going to share with you the community activities that are planned for Friday for Laramie.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about the celebration, celebrating Laramie's 150th anniversary, I guess is what we'll call it. But obviously, we begin our kickoff on Friday, May 4th, from 11:30 to 6:00 p.m. at the Wyoming Territorial Prison. For the community citizens for most of the day, it starts with from noon to 3:00, having a showing of movies in the upstairs, I forgot what it's called, the upstairs Horse Barn Theater. Yep, and we'll be showing an episode of Into the Tracks, which is a PBS documentary, an episode of Hell on Wheels, maybe Don't Take Your Kids, and then an episode of Laramie from past history. After that, it's going to follow with community speakers that are going to go through different lines of the history of Laramie, starting with Jessica Flock in A Walk Through Wyoming and ending with Dewey Gallegos and Laramie Hoy, A History of Chicanos in Laramie. So there's a long day of historical representation and walk-through history that day. Also, part of that is between 11:30 and 6:00, there's going to be history stations. There'll be a Stagecoach, Tractors, Pony Express, Morse Code, a Blacksmith, Fort Life, representing the life at Fort Sanders, Cowboys, Old Time Games, Fire and Police, and Archaeology. Between 11:30 and 3:30, we'll have a little bit over 500 ACSD School District Number One students in 4th and 5th grade come through, and then it'll be open, those history stations will be open to the public following that. So we're excited to have this all together. If there's one thing I could say about this event is it shows the power of a committee, you know, a large steering committee that consists of folks from the City of Laramie, the University of Wyoming, Albany County Historical Society, Albany County Library. I know I'm going to miss some, but there is just a large group of people that are working to make this a success. Following up from May 4th, on May 5th will be the Model Railroad Depot, the Model Railroad Show at the Historic Depot, which is part of the event. They will follow up their event with a Depot Art Show that goes, I believe, Sunday through Tuesday at the Depot also. We're also partnering with Cinco de Mayo at the Lincoln Center, and we'll have a booth there on display, displaying the different artifacts and the pieces that we've collected. So we're real excited about this event. We'd encourage you to come out. We are still in the need of some financial support in the form of sponsors, and we're also looking for volunteers, so if anybody's interested in volunteering on May 4th, we are still in the throes of trying to find our final volunteers to get this finished up. I did bring some of our, some of the items that are on sale. This is a child-friendly railroad spike. I would keep them away from glass and other pieces, but we've got lots of things. I think you've seen the flags flying in Laramie. That was fundraised through this group to pay for the flags. They're a beautiful addition. We've got coins, a lot of stuff that people can earn through doing different activities, or stickers, and just really a fantastic start to what we believe is a fantastic celebration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Would you also mention that Saturday is also Cleanup Day?
Oh, yeah, yeah. May 5th is also Community Cleanup Day, so they'll be hosting a cleanup. I think you report down here at 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., and then the lunch will be served down here for those that helped out at 11:30. So, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to disclosures by City Council members. Does any Council member have anything to disclose this evening? Okay, seeing none. Item number six, Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's one change to the agenda, and so I move that the following change be made on the consent agenda, which is part of the entire agenda, and that is item eight, I, number six, which is to cancel the May 8th work session on the North Campus Improvement. And that's the only change on the agenda, so I move that that change be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Have to vote.
All those in favor?
I have a question.
On the--
On the work session?
Yes.
Because I know we've canceled Casper Awkrefur as well, and we've canceled this. Will it be a work session next week?
There will be, yes.
Okay.
But it should be short, just routine business.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Opposed?
Your Honor, the work session on campus improvement is here, though, not on campus, right?
It's not. It's been canceled.
It was always here.
Yeah.
It was always here, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Shumway.
Now I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as changed. No? I need help from you.
That's adjusted.
Counselor Shumway, if you would just to move that the agenda be set as changed.
Okay, that's right, okay. I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Thank you. And that is a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Or roll call vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
And one more time.
Now, now I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Thank you. And?
It's a roll call.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And so, we go ahead and vote?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner, absent, Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight. Yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so on to the regular agenda, as we have different roles this evening. So Counselor Hanson, can you start us out with item number 10?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will try to start us off. I move that Council approve original ordinance number 1982, amending Title V of Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.010, definitions, I'm sorry, and then definitions 5.09.350, malt beverage permits for special events, 5.09.355 catering permits for special events, and 5.09.800 point system for alcoholic beverage license violations and suspensions on second reading.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Schuster. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, Counsel, this second reading is coming to you almost the same as it was last time, with the addition of the amendment that you asked for. You will see that in Section 2 and Section 3 of your attached ordinance. So we've added the allowing two bars in an existing room of 300 or fewer attendees, let me just read it for you. In the case where two or fewer dispensing areas of bars exist in a single room, with an event of 300 or fewer attendees, the entire room can be viewed from any location in the room. Only one permit is required. Events with more than 300 attendees will be charged for each bar or dispensing area. So that was added for, under the catering permits and under the malt beverage permits, the same wording. Otherwise, it is the same, and I will take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do any counselors have any questions for our city clerk? At this time? Thank you. Do members of the public have comments related to this particular item? And if you do me a favor, identify yourself for the record, and then remember to sign on your way out.
Okay. Excuse me. Good evening again, Counsel. My name is Roxy Hensley. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope that you've all had the opportunity to read and review the email that my husband, my son, and I sent you regarding the proposed changes specifically to the catering permit ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that you might have, as we outlined what our position as to the changes in the ordinance. In summary, just to make it brief, given the time, I just want to emphasize that a catering permit by state statute is just an extension of our retail liquor license. So its sole purpose is to allow a retail liquor license, which there's limited amounts in each jurisdiction, to serve alcohol off premises. The only people that are allowed to get a retail liquor license is those people who comply with state statute and follow all the rules and regulations that are outlined in the statute to obtain that special retail liquor license. So we're under heavy scrutiny as to the compliance and as to the issuing of that particular license in question. The state statutes limit the amount a city or town can charge for a retail liquor license, and that's anywhere from $300 to $1,500. The state statutes also set a fee limiting catering license fees for retail liquor license, and that's anywhere from $10 to $100. The proposed changes seem to circumvent that limit by imposing multiple permits for the same event, and would seem to contradict the intention of the legislature and the statute as it reads. Given this, we are asking the city to follow the intentions of the statute and the state and change the reflection to such, that is, one permit per one building per one event. Excuse me. In the alternative, given that the proposed ordinance's changes has and will have long-term effects on licensees catering to the University of Wyoming, I am proposing, or we are proposing the following: a compromise that the municipal code should provide an exception to the University of Wyoming Athletic Events and Gateway, and the Gateway Center, similar to the one that the ordinance is proposing for the Brew Fest and the Wine Fest, and also similar to the one that the city currently has for the Wildcat Stadium. The Wildcat Stadium has suites with bars in each room. However, only one permit is required for that entire event, which holds 500 people. Providing this exception will allow, Roxy's my business, or future licensees to be treated in the similar fashion to the Wine Fest, Brew Fest, and events at the Wildcat or Stadium. Additionally, it will promote competitive bidding for future contracts with the University of Wyoming Athletics. I believe that amending, being compromising with the city to change this type of language is appropriate and fair under the circumstances. If you have any questions, I am certainly open to answer.
Counselors, do we have any questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. How many stations in the stadium would you be talking about?
Last year, we started out, there were seven games, okay, and we started out with 12 stations, okay. We had two on each level, and then we had three in the end zone. We purchased the permits way before, you know, the season started, and we were, we worked with the city, and they compromised with us that we would only be, we would only need 10 permits per game. So they allowed us in that end zone area to just have one permit for those three bars. After the third game, the university, the staff at the university, and athletics, all the sponsors, the beer sponsors, got together because we were trying to figure out how it could, how it could work better for the public, because we did have some lines, and given that this was the first year, we had some issues with the pouring system. So what we did was we combined those 12 bars, or serving areas, into six serving areas, which, you know, next year, what our plans are, is we're going to see for each game, depending on attendance, because the first couple games, the crowd was a sellout. The last game, I believe they had 1,500 people there. So we paid for those permits, but at the end, those last few ga, well, the, let's see, five games, we only used six permits. So we took that as a loss. I did talk to the city clerk and the staff to see if they would allow us to perhaps use those permits for future events. I wasn't asking for reimbursement. I was just asking if we could, you know, apply those unused permits for the future, and that it was, they weren't able to accommodate us. Then for basketball, we had four stations, okay, for men's and women's, and we paid for those ahead of time, and we, for the men's games, we opened all the, all the serving units. And then for the girls' games, given the attendance after the first game, I believe, the staff at the university and athletics and ourselves, we thought it was, like I said, given the low attendance, we only used two of those stations. So we had 19 games for the men, and we had, let's see, had 16 regular season games, and then we had two NITs. So, and then we paid for that before the season started, and then after the season started, Cowboy Joe came to us and asked us if we would be willing to use our license to Staff Mickey's, which is the bar area for the Cowboy Joe Club members. So, you know, we have a good working partnership with the University of Wyoming, and we told them we would do that, because we all felt that things were going really well, given that there was one vendor that they had to work with, with football and basketball, and it was my license that we used, and plus, we obtained the insurance for $2 million liability for these events. So that was all on us. And so for, after the season started, we went, had to purchase additional permits for Mickey's. So we purchased 19 permits for Mickey's. Please keep in mind that at Mickey's, before the game, all the beer was comped. There was no beer sales at all. And then after the game started, they opened it up to have sales. You know, the sales started, the first game, I believe there was one beer that was sold. By the end of the season, I believe it ended up to be 30 beers. So in a sense, there, it was a loss at the basketball games. But that's okay. It's the first year, and we're working on it to get it better. So, so we paid those additional fees for that additional bar. Now, we did take for the women's game, because there was two unused permits for, you know, 15, let's see, it'd be 15, 17 games, even though we paid for them, we didn't use them. We took the one additional one on some of the games and applied it to Mickey's, but there was other times when we didn't. We bought that additional permit. And, you know, there were times, given the timing and the scheduling of the game, we were imposed that $50 fine. And in particular, it was when the University of Wyoming had decided, like a week before, to go ahead and, you know, see what, how it would work out if we sold beer and wine at the wrestling match that followed the basketball game. Well, we had approached the city, and we said, well, this is a 24-hour permit. Can we just extend those hours? And we were informed that we could not do that. We had to get a brand-new permit, even though it was in the same 24-hour period. So we ended up paying that additional $75 plus a $50 fee, fine, because it wasn't, we didn't get notice of it in the 14-day timeframe that is in your ordinance for a fine. That also occurred with the first NIT game. And please keep in mind, it was frustrating for us, because some of these things are completely out of our control, and they're out of the control of the staff at the University of Wyoming, too. And we're trying everything we can do to work within the ordinance of the city. But at the NIT, on Friday, if you follow basketball, the girls lost at the Mountain West Tournament. And we received a call and said, you know, it's likely that we will get an NIT bid for the following week. So we received a letter from the University of Wyoming to submit to the city about getting permits. Now, it was not within the 14 days, because it was impossible. And so, and so we, we paid the $70 fee for the three bars, plus the additional $50 fine for that. And, and it just, it just seems unreasonable, especially when it's out of our control, and we have the university here that's trying to bring more people to the community, trying to bring, to make their attendance higher for these games, so they're, you know, they're proposing these beer sales. And we're doing everything that's been asked of us, you know. We're, like I told you before, we're doing these wristbands, we're stamping, we're only selling four beers in a five-hour period. You know, we had, we were, we, there were games at times at the football game, we were staffing 90, 80 to 90 people. And then at the basketball games, there were times when we were staffing, like I said, in the email that we sent you, was up to 35 people. So these additional fees on these permits are almost cost-inhibitive, and to be honest with you, if people, if other people wanted to bid on this, to work with the university, I think they would think twice. I, I think they would think twice.
Sure.
So...
Counselor Hanson?
Did that make sense? I hope.
She answered a lot of the questions, but maybe just to clarify again in the email, the 230 events?
That was, no, I had, okay, to, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, I just need to clarify, you have 230 events proposed, and 39 permits?
No, we had 230 permits that we had to obtain, and that wasn't counting the additional permits for the wrestling or for the NIT.
Okay.
And, and that was 39 events, which is the seven basketball games where we had 70 permits, or, I mean, for the football game, 70 permits.
Okay.
And it was actually, yeah, 70 permits, and then for the basketball, it was, what, men's times 19 times four is like 70, and then the women's is, is about the same. So it's just...
Fifty.
And, you know, and when, when we talk about administrative costs, you know, and I, I know it's some work on, on the clerks, you know, having to review those submissions, but in, in, in reality, and I have my manager here, and he can certainly address this, but it literally takes us 30 to 40 minutes to fill out every single permit. And, and even though it's the same permit, and you have 10 of them at the game, it, it's repetitive, it, I'm spending, you know, it's costing us a lot of money, and I can only imagine, you know, reviewing those permits when, in all reality, they're the same, from game to game to game.
Thank you. Counselor Polikas?
Yeah, I, when I read the state statute, and when they talk about catering permits, they talk about meetings, conventions, private parties and dinners, and then they finish it off by saying it, "other similar gatherings." And then you look at the football stadium, and you look at the basketball stadium, and it really doesn't fit into any of those. And I think the legislature recognized that when they decided, when the university decided to start serving alcohol. And that's why they allowed municipalities to put an amendment into their, into their liquor licenses, to allow the university to buy one permit for the whole year, for the whole facility, because they recognized that there's too many different ways to do it. And my question is, is why, why are you going through all this when the university can have a permit, pay one-time fee, covers all the football games for the whole season, have a, pay one fee for the basketball arena, because everything in the basketball arena is going to happen, including NIT, including anything that's going on in there? That seems like the reason why the legislature allowed the university to do it, and we're not taking advantage of it. And why isn't, why aren't you working with the university? You're coming to us, but why aren't you working with the university and have them just take one flat-fee permit, and you provide the alcohol?
And, you know, and I can't answer that, because we, we have briefly discussed that, and, and I can only assume why they, they don't want to do it quite yet, is because, you know, it's, it's in the first stages, and, and I believe that the trustees are a little leery about that, the liquor liability issues. And so that falls back on me and my license, and that's why when I say to you that, you know, I am not going to do anything that's not in my, out of my power to jeopardize my liquor license. That is my livelihood, and so I, I just, that's my only assumption there, that maybe down the road, they might perhaps do that, you know, once we get into this and see how well it goes.
So when I put it all together, okay, and if it's unworkable for our different liquor licensed providers, and it's unworkable for all of them, then the university's left with either two solutions. Don't provide liquor at the games, or buy the permit themselves, which is the purpose of the whole thing that the legislature went through, and we went through, to approve it. We, we did not expect you to be buying individual licenses for the stadium. We expected the university to pay one fee for the whole year, and then contract out with a licensed retailer to, to do their, to, to provide the services. And, and that's not what's happened here. What's happened here is you've gotten yourself into a pickle, in that you're dealing with something that, a long time ago, the legislature realized is not going to be very workable, and we're trying to, you're, you're, we're trying to work something out that's not workable, if you will, and that's why we went to the university system of buying one fee, one license, the whole year.
And, and I guess I, I know that, I don't know of, the only license I know of is for the Union?
No.
Is that the license you're talking about? That's the only one I know of?
Let me refer to the city clerk, because I know she knows.
Sure. Counselor Polikas, counsel, your honor, last, last summer, in June, you finished up those ordinance changes where the liquor, the legislature, excuse me, had expanded that civic center license to beyond municipally-owned liquor, or, excuse me, stadiums and civic centers and such. So you now have that ability to license the fairgrounds, you, different university buildings, all under that malt, it's another malt beverage, it functions very similar to the one at the Union, but it's building-specific, and you set fees based on capacity for any building that falls into that. So it's stadiums, arenas, civic center-type situations.
And city clerk, did we not set a fee earlier in the year for these different venues?
Yes, by resolution, last summer, you set a, a fees that go along with the other fees that you changed by resolution last summer.
Which would be less expensive than what's been being paid at the present time by Roxy?
I haven't done the numbers. I know we, we fashioned it to be similar to what, to cover games, but it would also cover the whole year of any other events.
Right.
So we tried to come up with what a similar fee would be for a season, for a football season, would be what the stadium would pay, and so on.
So can I, I'd like to interrupt. Our city clerk has, has to leave, and she is basically our resident expert on, on this particular issue. I know our city manager and attorney could potentially jump in and answer some of these questions, but I just want to make the public aware of that, and council aware that she will be, she will be leaving at this time.
Goodbye.
Like in two minutes. And so I think, I would like to, because we have other folks who own establishments here, I believe, we'd be more than happy to listen to them as well, but in terms of moving much forward on this particular discussion, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how far we're going to get on it this evening, but because you're here, we want to listen to you. So I just want to, I just want to make that, that announcement as well.
And I'll be really brief, you know, I, I would like to address your, your, your statement. Okay, so my understanding is that you are working on an ordinance or resolution for a malt beverage permit, is that versus for the civic center? And I, I just want you to keep in mind that a malt beverage permit is completely different than a catering permit. A catering permit, and maybe I wasn't clear enough, a catering permit can only be obtained by a retail liquor license, so it's that extension. And when you do that catering permit, they're allowed to sell beer, wine, and alcohol, okay? A malt beverage permit, anyone can get one. So you can get one, anyone off the street. And, you know, I always, I often wonder about this, and I don't want to make an issue of it here, but, you know, as far as the accountability by allowing that, I think that's always been questionable, because with my liquor license, like I said, I do anything, I'll make sure that I'm in complete compliance. As a malt beverage permit, it's anybody, okay, that can get that. So, and the malt beverage permits are for beer, okay? And, and, and this, and it was in the legislature, is, is written years ago, and this kind of touches a little bit about Brew Fest, and like I said, I have nothing against Brew Fest. I love it, I think it's a, a great thing. But, you know, nowadays, the beers out there are like 9, 10, 12% alcohol. So, you know, so in a sense, you know, it needs to probably be relooked at, so that, you know, is that really alcohol? Or, or is it the beer that's, at the time that, that that was enacted, it's like four and five, or I think it's 4%, it was 4%, the Budweisers, Coors Lights, Miller Lights. So there, there is a difference with those catering permits and the malt beverage, and we serve wine at the University of Wyoming, and that's for the, the women or, or the men, you know, who don't want to drink that beer. So we have to have a catering permit, not the malt beverage permit. So just, just to highlight a little bit about that.
Okay, Counselor Hanson?
Question, do you sell anything besides beer and wine at, at the stadium?
What we've done is we work with the concession, concessions, and we provide water, because we want to be really responsible. We provide that water as well as peanuts, for people to eat with the beer.
But no other liquor?
No, no, it's wine, and it's beer. And keep in mind that for, by the university policy and the working agreement that we have with them, because we want this to be respons, you know, we want this new, this new project, so to say, of serving alcohol at the university, we want it to be successful, and we're all being responsible about it. We are required to only sell beer, I believe is only, under, under 5% alcohol. So I can't sell craft beers that are 7, 8, 12, 12% alcohol.
So are there any other questions for Ms. Hanson? Okay. Is there any other member of the public at this time that would like to address us regarding this particular ordinance? If you come forward and identify yourself, and then don't forget to sign.
Your honor, members of the city council?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I can grab it. It's the notebook, I think, that, for signing.
It's just right.
Just search "signing".
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Your, your honor, members of the city council, I'm Karen Robillard, and I'm here representing both Altitude Chop House and Brewery and the Brew Fest. I'm the chairman of the Brew Fest, and really, I'm here to answer questions that you may have. I know we have so many different events, and they're all handled in their own ways, and you may wonder, you know, how they're being handled, and you may have some questions about those events. So with Altitude, we do cater the, the Wildcat Stadium Club, and so if you have specific questions about how that operates under one license, I'm happy to answer those questions for you. And again, with Brew Fest, if you're wondering how we operate that under the one permit also, I'm happy to answer those questions as well.
Do we have any questions? Counselor Hanson?
So you're doing the, the bars in the Wildcat?
Correct.
How many are there?
So we have the main club area.
Yeah.
And then beyond that, there are 12 suites, so there's 13.
13 bars.
Mm-hmm. The bars within the suites are handled much differently than the club area. The club area is a cash-bar situation, so the people that are in the club area will come to the, to the bar, and it's a cash sale situation. With the 12 suites, those are pre-orders, so it's basically a retail sale. And so we get an order three to four days in advance of the game, and we take that order, and we stock the suites. And so it's basically a retail sale to the suites.
Okay. One follow-up question, and that requires one permit?
Correct.
Correct, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Right. Within those suites, we're not, we're not providing a cash sale type of a, of a situation, it's, it's something where we're, where we're stocking their suites with a pre-order.
There are no cash sales in any of those 13 bars?
No. So within, within the suites, if they, everything is, is pre-ordered, okay? So, so they'll pre-order their wine, their beer, their liquor, and then we will, and then we'll stock their suites for them. If they run out of something, then the suite server that is assigned to that suite will go to the club area, to the bar, and that will be a purchase from the bar. So any purchase is, is happening from one dispensing area.
But basically, I mean, it's, you're not out money for the alcohol, you, you get, you charge the individual bars?
We do, yes, as a retail sale. Mm-hmm. As a, as a pre-order.
Okay.
Correct. And then on the day of, if they want something in addition, it's handled as a cash sale within the main club area bar.
Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
Uh, thank you. I was a guest in one of the suites, and if I remember right, the suites only have beer and wine?
They don't. They have beer, wine, and liquor. The club area...
The one I was in did not?
Not, some of them choose not to. Some choose not to have any alcohol, some choose beer and wine, and others choose a full bar. And then the club area that serves the, the cash bar, that's a beer and wine.
Yes.
Only.
Thank you.
Counselor McKee?
So, thank you. So the one permit, you get the one permit because you have a single bar in the area, because everything else is stocked, everything is pre-ordered, so there is no sales in those?
Correct. If they, if they choose to purchase something on the day of, then the server purchases it from, from the bar.
Basically a maître d'.
Yeah, we have, we have a dispensing area with a cashier, and so...
That's the one permit.
Exactly, and that permit is held within that area.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions on Brew Fest at all, in the way that that's managed?
I think the thing that needs to be clarified is, is in those suites, there's no, there's no, it's, there's not a bar there, because there's nothing being sold. It's, it's there available for the guests of who is, or the people that are in that suite.
Right.
They've already purchased it through the bar, so there's really only one bar in the Wildcat Stadium.
Correct, yeah. The others could be consider, can be considered a, a kitchen within their, within their space.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So all the suites are just self-serve?
There are servers that are assigned to each suite, but they're there to maintain, you know, just to kind of, to keep things clean, and to bus, and, and to refill, and et cetera. So they're not...
They don't get to drink?
If they're requested to make a drink, they will make a drink, but that's not their specific duty to do. Most of the suites are going to find herself-serve. Yeah.
Counselor Hanson?
Just a follow-up question. You said there is, in the main area, the central area, there is a main bar.
Correct.
Now, that's where money changes hands, right?
Yes, that's a cash bar.
That's a cash bar. When these other bars come in and run out of stuff, they say, I need so-and-so much more, they pay for it.
They purchase it from there, correct. Yes.
Okay. That's a sale, in my opinion. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And who's our next person? Come on up. If you'd introduce yourself, and then identify, and then on your way out, if you'd sign the sign-in sheet. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Love. Hi, how are you, city council? I'm here because I want to talk about the alcohol and beer. You know, to serve them, to serve alcohol and beer, or, and wine, I think it's a really bad choice, because it is, it's bad for our brains, and our bones, and her, and our body. And I encourage us to stop serving wine and beer to our educators, or education, to our students in schools, and also cities. And the reason why is because there's too many things going on, health-wise, that also, you know, that gives, just, it's just a bad thing, that we should not have this alcohol, beer, or wine, served in schools, not have Brew Fest. We have other options, we can do different fests. The reason why is because the health is important in everybody's life, you know? We need to stop serving poisons to our community, and hopefully in this nation, and hopefully one time, or sometime, abolish it, because, you know, there's too many accident, car accidents, cancer, you know, the brain does not function, function right while, under the influence. I really discourage the alcohol, the beer, and the wine, and to, to promote more of a healthier environment. healthier environment for the community, and through the nation, if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
You just need to sign. So, is there anybody else from the public who would like to comment on this particular ordinance?
I just have one follow-up, if I may.
Sure.
And I'm not here to make this a complicated situation, because I, I think we're trying to make it a complicated situation. But following up about where the actual sale takes place when you are serving alcohol, there are many, many times and many events that I am required to get a permit either at the gateway, or on, at the University of Wyoming, other, other areas where there, it's a hosted bar, so there is no money taking place, but I'm still required to get that permit. So, I, what I'm asking is for everybody to be on the same level playing field here, there, because I'm in business, and it's, it's, it's part of the bidding process, and it's part of the competition, and, and just being in business, and, and your budgets, so.
So, thank you. I will at this time, given that our city clerk has, has left, I will entertain a motion to postpone this ordinance, if we want to do that now, as a council, or we could perhaps have discussion on this, but I think it might be a good idea to postpone, but it's really not up to me to make that motion, so if someone wants to do that, we can do that.
Your honor, it strikes me, if we postpone, we can't discuss it anymore.
Today.
Today.
Right.
I think it probably would be good to have some discussion with the idea that we postponed it then, but, you know, I think it's, it's worthwhile to discuss this matter, so that we don't start from square one next time. That would be my, my predilection here, with the idea that eventually, yeah, we probably needed to postpone it, but if we do that now, there's no more discussion possibly, parliamentarily.
Right, at this time.
Yeah.
So...
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanted to add my two cents, the concern that I have with the city clerk being gone, and the city attorney both being gone, is that this is a highly technical issue, and I think that in discussions, they are very helpful during the discussions, to make sure that we are understanding the guidelines clearly, and not going off into areas that we can't, because of the legality involved with permitting. So, it would be my recommendation that we just have a full discussion next two weeks, when both of them are available for the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gabriel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One thing I would like us to consider is what Roxy brought up about moving from basketball to wrestling on the same day. That doesn't seem fair, that she would have to get another permit. Or, when you can't anticipate games, and then she's charged an extra $50. So, I mean, little things like that, I think, should be flexible in this ordinance, and, you know, in the future, if we could have some kind of stipulation that those things you can't control are not charged for.
Okay.
I'd like to address Councilor Gabriel. I understand what you're saying, and I go back to when we passed the resolution to allow the university to take out a permit for the one-time fee for the whole year, for all the events that are going to happen within that facility. That's the reason for it, is because it gets really complicated when you start taking out catering permits, and, and probably following state statute, or trying to follow state statute as, as it was intended, it gets complicated, and it may get more expensive, and, you know, it's kind of buying a season pass at a ski area versus individual days. There's times where people that use the facility enough, probably ought to take the season pass route. And, and I see these facilities as, this is why we offered that to the university at the time.
Councilor Shumway.
Well, I think we've reached the point where it's probably time to postpone. One of the reasons is because when we talk about the 14-day notification, we don't have our, our city clerk, or our city attorney here to give us some direction on that. Also, we don't know what the state guidelines are for this, we're just kind of trying to make, discuss this, and I think we need to get everyone together, so that we can have direction that's, that is not just assumptions, but it gives us clear direction of where we're going. So, I would move that we postpone this discussion until the, to be the May 15th, where we bring it up. This is, we're still in the second?
Second reading.
Second reading, so I make a move that we postpone.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And...
We can discuss postponement.
Do we have any discussion regarding the postponement?
Yeah, I guess I have, and I have, I don't, I don't, if we vote down this postponement at this point in time, can we bring up a vote for postponement later on, after, during, later on in the discussion? Or once you, I know it's, I know it's a Roberts rules, and I don't have an answer for it, but I'd like to know that before I decide whether to vote for a postponement at this point in time, or perhaps change my mind half an hour from now.
And I don't have the answer to that either.
I'll look up the rule. I think that you can, especially if you've amended or whatnot, but let me take a quick peek at the cheat sheet for you, council.
I think we can, too, when I looked at it. I think there has to be a change.
I'm gonna, I don't know, we're waiting on a ruling regarding Roberts rules, but it's the same thing, and I don't think we can do the same thing twice.
Hi, Chair.
Go ahead.
My ruling would be that no, it cannot, unless a member of the group, whoever voted in the negative, changes their vote, and is represented for a motion for postponement, it'll, it'll be messy, but you can't just bring it up between the floor again, without going through that process.
That's true, that would be right.
Two-thirds are reconsideration.
So, we can only postpone once?
No, no.
If somebody that voted in the negative to postpone, then, wanted to bring it up again, only the people that were in the majority vote could bring it up again.
So, we have on the floor a motion to postpone, and we have a second, so we need to vote. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
So, and we, not a majority, I mean, a, two-thirds vote, correct?
A majority.
And, okay, so could you...
Okay, so to vote, Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Stoner absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
So, that's five yes, three no, one absent.
So, we are postponed on item number 10, until May 15th. Okay. Item number 11, Councilor Polikas.
Thank you. This is, this is for an approval of a professional service agreement for the citywide storm sewer drainage master study. I would move to approve a professional service agreement with John Wood Group, P L C, to create a storm drainage master study for the city of Laramie, for a total amount of $116,000, $116, $190, along with a contingency of $11,620, for a total amount not to exceed $120,810, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
And do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Councilor Shumway has a second. Go ahead, Engineer Japp.
Your honorable mayor, members of council, last year, city staff solicited a request for qualifications for the citywide storm drainage master study, and that we received four proposals for the work, and after reviewing the proposals, it was determined that Amyc Foster Wheeler, who is now the John Wood Group, was the most qualified consultant. The scope of work in front of you tonight will be to combine and update the west, the north, and the south Laramie drainage master plans into one document. This will also include combining all three drainage models into one model, and from this work, the consultant will develop a prioritized capital improvement project list, and the last task will be to create a citywide map of the storm sewer system. It is the recommendation of staff to award the professional service agreement to John Wood Group for the citywide storm, storm drainage master study. With that, I can answer any questions you may have on it.
Do we have any questions for Engineer Japp? Go ahead, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one question, I guess, for the city manager. How much money did we spend on the four plans that preceded this?
Mayor and council, Eric may be able to answer that question for you, but I'd remind you, some of those studies go back decades, so I'm not sure if that's information that we would have readily available. Eric, you want to add anything?
No, that's correct. I don't have any, I don't, we could find it, but I don't have. I think the west Laramie started in 2008, 2007, the north Laramie was about 2009 to 2011, and we're just kind of wrapping up the south Laramie right now, so.
Mayor and council, if it's data that you would like to have, we could probably pull it from the archives.
Which would be important, pardon me, Your Honor, which would be important anyway, because I would assume that there is a lot of information in the individual plans that can be used by this group, where we to pass this, to combine these things. It just strikes me, I mean, yeah, it's probably better to combine this and have a uniform, well, not uniform, but a, an all-encompassing plan that addresses storm drainage, rather than sort of a segmental one. Just my observation, we should have done that early on. We're kind of going through two motions here, and combining something that we should have done a long time ago, yeah. The prices fair, you think?
Your honorable mayor, Councilor Hanson, yes, it is.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? Councilor McKinney.
How long is this going to take?
Your honorable mayor, Councilor McKinney, we don't have a timeline at this point, when we have...
Maybe years?
No, we're probably looking at about a year for this study, if, if not less than that. The data gathering is going to take some time, just because there's been a lot of updates in the west Laramie area since the last one was done, that's where a lot of the, the mapping and the updating is going to be taking place. We've installed all the improvements around Linford, which did some major drainage improvements. Fortunately, the consultant that we're looking at here actually did that work, so he's going to have a lot of, all that information already available. But we've also installed quite a bit of storm sewer systems and stuff like that, so that kind of items need to be updated for like the west Laramie and those kind of items.
Do we have any other questions?
Well...
Councilor Polikas.
I'm trying to look through this and find where part of their duties are to research and update the previous plans. Is it in here?
Your honorable mayor, Councilor Polikas, let me look at this task real quick, and I can, um, task one is going to be the combining of the documents into a single.
Right.
Task two is development, task three, or development of the capital improvement plan. Task three is create a citywide map of the storm sewer system. Task four is to create a citywide model, so that'll be combining all three of the models into one. So, those are the four tasks that are up for award at this time.
So, a, an assessment of the, because we've made a lot of improvements since 2010, particularly in west Laramie, and those plans that were made in 2010 need to be updated.
That is part of, that is included in their, in their scope.
And that's included in their project, and there may be some of the other, other studies that some improvements have been made, I would assume.
Yes, there are some in the north, north side, and items like that, so.
So, the updating is part of the process?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I looked at the, the budget, there's of course quite a bit of more money set aside for this particular item. Will we simply save the rest of that money, or what is it envisioned for?
Your honorable mayor, Councilor Hanson, the hope is, as you'll notice, some of the tasks were cut out of this project. The hope is that we can find money at a later time, and possibly add it to this project as an addendum, and have it, use the money that's left over to be part of that addendum.
To do what later?
That would be to develop a citywide storm water regulations and design manual.
Oh, okay.